See is how our clock is wrong and the official clock says at 6:31, we'll call this meeting to order and get going. Call or roll?
John.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Kinley.
Here.
Robbie Crew.
Here.
Shaw.
Salter.
Here.
And Quorum.
Thank you. Would you please rise? Dom, would you give the invocation?
Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before you this evening in prayer recognizing that all good gifts around us are sent from you and we are truly thankful. We thank you for our military personnel and we pray that you would keep them out of harm's way. We pray for those in our community who are widowed, orphaned, ill, infirm, those who are hurting, and those in need. Lord, we pray that you would send your grace, help us to aid where we are unable to do so. We thank you for all that you have caused to work and be affiliated with our city government. Lord, we pray that you would lead, guide, and direct this commission this evening, that the actions that they take may be pleasing unto you. Be with us as we leave this place and keep us safe, and we'll give you all the praise and the glory. Amen.
Please join me in flag salute. Attention, position, flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Consider a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Harris. Second by Commissioner Bouchon. Call the question. Motion carries six oh. Item two, citizens' participation. We have a three-minute per person limit and a 12-minute per subject. If there's anyone that would like to address us, approach the podium and tell us who you are and sign in, please. We can always count on Holly.
You know, I just can't stand it. Good evening, gentlemen. Holly Gordon. Trying to write and talk at the same time. I think I have the same problem every single time. I just wanted to acknowledge, this weekend was Shawnee Trail Days downtown. I don't know how many of you all got to participate and go, but I wanted to acknowledge and thank the chief of police and all of his staff. Their presence was greatly felt and it was awesome. We were in Tom Terry Park. We were blowing bubbles with officers and little kids, and it was truly one of those Americana moments that was heartfelt and endearing, and it was really nice to see all the officers in full uniform interacting with the youth and the citizens. So I just wanted to commend our police department and their efforts in community involvement. They're really doing a good job. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, commissioners. Like to have a personal invite from the board of the Hart Oklahoma Expo Center for the city commission and city staff to come out on July the 12th. It's 25th anniversary for the International Finals Youth rodeo. Got a lot of really exciting things occurring that week, and also the city of Shawnee will be recognized as a 25-year sponsor for that event, so we certainly appreciate your support, and we look forward to seeing you again on July the 12th, and I believe you may have an invitation in your packet even. Thank you for that support for 25 years.
You bet.
And also thanks for renewing our contract.
Thank you very much. Item three, presentation by city manager to employee of the month, Jason Perswell, Utilities Administration.
Jason, come on up, please, sir. My pleasure tonight to announce the employee of the month as Jason Perswell. Jason started working in the utility department in July 2013. This is pretty interesting. He comes from a family of water operators dating all the way back to 1966. He started as a plant operator at the water plant, but last year decided to move to another position in the administration office, serving as the commercial and industrial waste monitor. In this position, he ensures wastewater discharge is -- wastewater that is discharged by factories and food service facilities is not harmful to our water treatment or surrounding water supplies. Jason does a great job, and it's my pleasure to congratulate you this month, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item four, discussion, consideration, possible action on Clint Lathan's appeal of an administrative order requiring the demolition of the residential structure located at 703 South Pottinger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Okay, the first case that we have before us today is really an appeal to the administrative order requiring the dismantling and removal of a residential structure at 703 South Pottinger. The first hearing that we had for this particular structure was February 8, 2017, and during that hearing, we had two representatives for the property present to talk about the structure. I provided some pictures in your packet if you'd like to take a look there. It was decided during the first hearing that we would give them 60 days or until May 11 to gather the funds to get a remodel permit together on this particular property. And really, in the meantime, what our request to was, request to the property owner was, is to meet with one of our residential inspectors to go through the property and really make sure they knew what they were getting themselves into with the remodel permit. And secondly, was to submit an acceptable remodel permit for this property. Come May 11, no property owners were present for the hearing, so at that time, it was ordered to be razed and removed. It was a matter of a couple of days after that that we received a protest letter, and really what it comes down to is sometime in that 60-day period, the property was sold to somebody else. The reason we don't allow that during our proceedings is that we have no way of notifying any new property owner that they are in this process. That is something the property owner, the original property owner should have let them know about, and a title search would have likely brought that up as well. That really is why we're here today for this, and really regardless, staff would rather see the structure remodeled than torn down. So staff's going to recommend 30 days to get a remodel permit if one's not already ready to go, submitted, and approved. That way, it gives them six months really to get that work completed.
Thank you. Any questions for Justin?
So we're giving additional 30 days, 30 days to the new owner, basically, to come up with a plan then? Is that the idea?
Correct. The idea really is to give them 30 days to get that residential remodel permit submitted, but in an acceptable state. It's not just submitting, it's having those contractors already ready to go, ready to be called.
Okay, okay.
It doesn't need to go back through the planning commission or anything. It's something that you all can evaluate.
No, it's my understanding that really what we ought to do here is to do this, but bring it back to the city commission in a 30-day, whenever we're 30 days as fast, if that permit has not been submitted at that time.
That's your recommendation?
That's my recommendation, yeah.
They'd already asked for it to be moved from the last meeting till this meeting, the owner, but they're not here at this time. Okay.
I would move to motion to order here.
Yes.
I'd move, go ahead and...
Moved by Commissioner Gilbert.
Is there any other...
Commission may desire to hear from the owner of the property as well before you make the motion. Just a suggestion.
Do you want to be heard from?
Hello, I'm Clint Lathan. I live out in Bethelakers. I've been rehabbing houses here in town for 12 years. I've currently got about eight rental houses, been in the same condition as this. It's been a debacle with me and the former owner. Their mother died. The kids are selling the house. They're not forwarding me information. They're ignorant of the business and real estate laws, so we've been missing each other on... Anyway, when I found the notice on the window at the house, that's when I refiled the, you know, appeal. So I'm glad to hear that, you know, they're suggesting what I've asked for, which is... And I'd already submitted plans to the city because they returned them to me because they said that, you know, this was happening. So they've already, they're already there, the plans are already there. I've already, I use local people, you know, McCown Plumbing, Wilson Electric, everybody that I use on these houses, I've used for years. So the bottom line is 703 South Pottinger looks terrible. It was abandoned because a little old lady lived there. I've already started work on it. I'm ready to go with it. I'll have it done in six months. So I don't know if you've seen that part of town, but it definitely needs upgrades.
It does.
So I'll have the lot cleaned up, the house, windows, roof, everything, renovated, basically, just like I've done on others.
Any questions of Clint? Thank you. There is a motion there, second. Thank you. Second. Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Call the question. Punch your button, Ron. Motion carries six oh. Thank you very much. Thank you. Discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve an ordinance regarding combining the City of Shawnee Beautification Committee with the Shawnee Chamber of Commerce Beautification Committee into one committee.
Mayor and Commissioners, a couple of months ago, we brought this to you, asking for your blessing on trying to bring an ordinance to you to combine the Chamber Beautification and the City Beautification Committees. Before that, if you were not aware, there were two committees operating. They were somewhat collaborating together, but then again, doing their own projects. And it came to us that the chamber was wanting to get out of the beautification business, so both committees had talked about it and decided that we'd like to try to combine. And the attorneys have come up with an ordinance, which is in your packet, that brings both of them together. It also adds some to the qualifications of being on the committee. It has always been a policy that in order to sit on a committee, that you had to be a resident of the city of Shawnee, which has kind of limited the beautification committee that I feel, because there's just not a whole lot of people interested in that. And if they are, they generally live in the county. So we asked to widen that out to include business owners or property owners, or those that are employed within a business within the city limits of Shawnee. It also brings the membership from six, which was on the beautification committee with one commissioner, to 10 with one commissioner on that committee, and that's not including staff that sits in on those meetings. What we're asking is for you to approve the ordinance, that's our recommendation. Do you have any questions?
Well thought out. Is there, are there any questions or comments? You're supposed to read.
I hope we approve the ordinance.
Second? Second. Moved by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Rutherford. Now you read.
An ordinance relating to the composition and the term of the office of the members of the City of Shawnee Beautification Committee, amending section three of ordinance 2077 NS, replacing and superseding that particular amendment of the same section in ordinance 2323 NS, and providing for severability, codification, and repeal.
Does this ordinance apply only to the beautification committee?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Call the question. Motion carries six zero. Item six, consideration of approval of a budget for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission members, item number six and number seven are related items that are part of our budget process. I won't go into a lot of detail because we had a half-day workshop that was focused on the budget, and we also had an agenda item at a public hearing at your June 5 meeting. But I did just want to quickly summarize, including in your packet, of course, is the budget summary, the adopting resolution, and then a letter from finance director Arnold and myself that summarizes the budget and where we're at and hopefully where we're going. It's worth pointing out that, of course, the budget is balanced, our, matched our revenues and our planned expenditures. Also worth pointing out that we have been able to fund everything that is listed for fiscal year 17 and 18 in the strategic plan that was recently adopted. So for year one of that five-year plan, we do have those projects that are identified as priorities adequately funded in this year's budget. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, comments? Entertain a motion.
I'd so move, but, you know, things have gone over on SMA and airport budget and so forth, and that's about over a five-year period, which is really a nice plan to work ahead to.
Our financial records and results and reporting are improving a lot as we go along, and I'll tickle the...
That's correct.
Is there a second?
I don't know how to put it exactly.
Commissioner Bouchon. Call the question. Motion carries six oh. Item seven, consideration of resolution adopting the budget for the city of Shawnee for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of budget.
So I move.
Commissioner Harris.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gillum.
A resolution approving and adopting the budget for the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of said budget.
Thank you. Call the question. Motion carries six zero. Public hearing, consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located southwest corner of 45th Street and Union Avenue from A1 Rural Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial District, case number P0417, applicant Sky Ortho SWM and Sons, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you just stated there, the property is located at the southwest corner of 45th Street and Union, and the request is to rezone from A1 Rural Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial. Staff has reviewed this request. The site is roughly an acre and a half in size, and directly adjacent to the north and to the east, these properties have been rezoned to commercial for that particular use. Staff has no objection to the rezoning.
I noticed that where the school is there, it's still zone as day one.
Yes, sir. Yes, schools can really allow to be in any zoning district.
It's a great location for that.
Any other questions, comments? There a motion to approve the rezoning?
I think that hearing is...
Oh, declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak for? Is there anyone here to speak against? Public hearing is closed.
Move we approve the rezoning.
Moved by Commissioner Harris. Second?
Second.
By Commissioner Bouchon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, a tract of land lying in the northwest quarter of section six, township 10, north range four east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, and more particularly described herein, rezoning said property from A1 Rural Agricultural District to C3 Highway Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Call the question.
I amend that motion to include the requirements for the staff, too. Does that have some requirements on it, Justin? Forward.
Well, this pick a lot. It listed essential requirements for commercial type uses.
Okay.
Call the question. Okay. Do good. Motion carries six oh. Public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 4006 North Kikapoo Street from R1 Single Family Residential District to C3 Highway Commercial District, case number P0617, applicant Nelman Bronny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar to some of the rezones we've done over the last couple of months, this property is located south of 45th Street, west of Kikapoo, and about two of these, just north here, were just rezoned from R1 to C3. Property is roughly three-quarters an acre in size. We received no protest letters, and staff does recommend approval for this rezone.
Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak for the proposal? Is there anyone here to speak against the proposal? Public hearing is closed. Are there any discussion or questions?
That's where everything's going. As you mentioned, that whole quarter is going to be commercial anyway.
I hope it is. That way, we'll get some more sales tax.
I notice there's still one resident lying in there. I'd move we approve the rezoning.
Moved by Commissioner Harris. Second by Commissioner Gillum.
An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, lot two in lot two, College View addition to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat there of rezoning said property from R1 Single Family Residential District to C3 Highway Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Call the question. Motion carries six oh. Item 10, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone with a conditional use permit for property located at 31807 Lake Road to allow for a manufactured home, case number P0717, applicant Paige Giddens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This next case here is out of the lake. This is just west of Lake One on Lake Road. The request here is a condition use permit for a manufactured home, which really differs from a mobile home based on HUD standard from 1976. So after that point, there really was a quality requirement for this type of construction, this type of use. So in 2014, when we updated the zoning code, what we did was change this allowance to a conditional use permit for agriculturally zoned land. Out here at the lake, at this particular piece of property, directly adjacent, there are several manufactured homes much like this on the property, and really just scattered throughout the lake, similar uses as this one here. We did receive one protest letter, unfortunately, it was after our original staff report had been sent out. I was able to bring that to planning commission to discuss, and I believe it should be in your packet at this point. I think we got that added there. Really, when looking at this, staff contacted HUD, really looked into this particular type of single-family residential construction, and especially after talking to HUD, it's very much considered because of those standards to be a quality type of single-family residence. So they agree with staff on this particular one and do recommend approval of this particular condition use permit. In your packet, there is exhibit one, which is really a letter from the property owner stating her case and why she believes that she should have her manufactured home there. And also, you should see the protest letter attached to as well. But again, I've listed on the staff report really the standards that make for the HUD requirements, and those include plumbing, heat, and air built on a permanent chassis can be transported in one or more sections, with each section at least eight feet wide and 40 feet long when transported and installed, is 320 square feet or greater. And again, just applies to structures built after 1976.
They're still built on a steel frame or metal frame like a mobile home would be, correct?
It is.
And this brought there on wheels and then put into place.
Correct.
How does it vary, for instance, from a mobile home, construction-wise?
That's a tough one to answer. It's just no standards were kind of set as high as they were before, or I'm sorry, yeah, before 1976 as they were after 1976. So after that point, they're given a stamp, given a sticker, even a placard on there just showing that they meet the quality that they were built from.
You mentioned we can't differentiate as a city between, let's say, a foundation-built home and one of these constructed homes.
Sure.
For the purposes, legal purposes then. If we have a zoning, in other words, for a single family, then they're perfectly right, they have a right to use that for that property. Now, this, in this case, that's not the case because it's agricultural, it's a business hill.
It is.
So again, we have to go to the condition permit. And the truth is, though, with a single mobile home, it's there with a conditional permit already, as well as a large motor home at this point. So the mobile home then would be, have to be taken off in order to put it there, since you can't have two particular living quarters or houses on the same single lot under those circumstances. The only way of changing that would be in the case the lot were separated, and then that would have to be approved to have that done.
That's absolutely right. And each lot would have to be five acres in size.
I'd much rather see this on a concrete foundation, but I can understand why someone might want to do that. For instance, the time element probably as much as anything else. I think it probably takes months less as far as bringing it in and putting it out. Again, it's not my preference, but I do understand where we are.
Any other questions, comments? We declare the public hearing open. If there is anyone here that would like to speak in favor, is there anyone here that would like to speak against? Public hearing is closed.
I have to be...
Sorry. I tend to move right along. You gotta be quick if you're gonna beat me.
My name is Paige Giddens. I'm the owner of the property. Me and my family have purchased this property in 2013. It was a mess. It was a tornado lot. The whole area there was nothing but debris. We have bought this property to a very beautiful lot and have made the decision of me and my family to relocate from our hometown, 20 years in town, to this property. I have pictures of surrounding homes of the same kind of structures, of the module manufactured homes. One next door, one down the street of about 100 yards. We do have contractors. We have a dry seller with the history of the tornadoes that came through. We were going to build, but we decided what we've seen and what we came up on, that we were going to just go ahead and place an already-ready manufactured home at 2007. It is a very nice one-owner, two double Y. We've got runners, concrete that we're going to put. We've got septic, well is complete. We will have that tied down very strongly with the mobile home, Duke's mobile home, we'll bring that in, a manufactured home. We will make sure that that is all it codes and permits, and we pray that that all works out for our family today.
Thank you, Paige.
I've got pictures that I would like to pass around of surrounding... Thank you.
If I'm reading this correctly, what you're proposing, putting there's a little over 2,000 square feet.
120. Yes, sir. It's a four-bedroom, two baths, two livings. And it was large, very nice, very clean. It was a one-owner that's going to be moved this one, second time. It was farmers that had owned it up in Midwest City. They have decided to upgrade, and they opened a sawed farm, so they have sold the manufactured home back to the first member, and he's going to move it just this one last time, so it'll only be moved twice. It's a very well, very well-quality home.
Any other questions? Thank you, Paige.
I grow that to the lot. There has been a lot of work done because I've been out there before when, after the tornado came.
Yes, sir. It's come a long way. And it was definitely needed a lot of people to get in.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
I'm Dana Marsh. Thank you for letting, thank you for letting me speak. I am the house that is actually right across the road and just a little to the east of where her property is. And I don't actually have, I'm not really for or against it. I'm kind of in between. I don't really care as long as they have to follow all the codes to get it there. There is another home that's a manufactured home right directly across from me. And I know some people are saying that, you know, it may bring down the property as far as the, the value of the property if we try to sell. But we've got people that have just built new houses around the corner. We've got small storage buildings on the lake. We've got people that are building new homes out there even with that there. So I don't really think that, you know, that that's gonna hurt a lot because we already have all that already out there. But I'd just like to say that I'm the one that's gonna be seeing it, looking at it. And as far as it, it's just, you know, they take care of the property. We've had, had some trouble before, but we're all past that. And I just think as long as they do it up to code, it should be okay.
Thank you, Dana. Any, any questions of Dana?
Although there's a beautiful home on the corner of Patterson and Lake, I will admit that when you're going east from there on Lake Road, that doesn't hold during that span for that next quarter mile or whatever it is.
Anyone else? I'm still looking for four. Anyone else? Anyone here to speak against?
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor.
I blow that mic out.
Tell us who you are, please.
I might need some help. Sorry, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Julie Ackerman and I'm a property owner out at the lake. I'm on this, the north side of Lake Road. I'm gonna apologize, I'm really nervous. I'm sorry about my voice. So I want to address this conditional use permit for the manufactured home on Lake Road. I took pictures of every home that is on Lake Road from Walker to Patterson, and they're in your packets. I included the first two homes as you turn onto Patterson. There are two brand-new brick homes there that were built after, after the tornado. Also, I think are in your packet, some homes that are on the lake that people are building. The homes are probably in the two thousand square foot area plus. And the, and the value of the homes of all of these homes that are being built out there are between a hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Since the tornado in two thousand thirteen, again, people have been rebuilding homes and they're building nice homes out there. I have been before the city council a couple of times on both of the other conditional use permits that were allowed out there. One is the tornado took and that house has not been replaced. In your packets, it's the lot that has just an empty concrete pad. There is a builder in the area that has tried to acquire that property. He wants to build another home there. And the other one is the only mobile home in one mile that's in your packet. So this would be the third conditional use permit on Lake Road. So almost, you know, if we keep getting permits out there, we're only gonna have mobile homes. So as you can tell from the photographs, the, the area out there isn't just like the country anymore. This is a community that's developing and building out there. And I'd like to see it continue to go in a, in a positive direction with, with homes. So I guess I would respectfully request the mayor and the commissioners to carefully consider the area that's directly around the lake before approving another permit. We just don't want it to adversely affect what's, what's trying, the community that's trying to develop out there. It's, you know, we've done a lot of work, the city of Shawnee has, on getting some lake zone things going on out there. And it's, it's a good area. It can be a great area. It's moving in a good direction. There are some other people here tonight who did not want to speak, but said that if I, if it was with your permission, they could stand up and show that they were not in favor of a mobile home, if that's okay with you guys. Has anybody out here who's against? Mr. Clark? Okay, he is too. But thank you so much for your time and consideration. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Any questions of Julie? Anyone else here to speak against?
Hello, my name is Amy Camerata. And I wasn't actually planning to speak, but I kind of changed my mind last minute. I am in the process of building a home on the lake just to the north and west of where this would be going. And while I certainly hope that Paige and her family is able to join us out in the lovely community that we have and in the city of Shawnee, this is very concerning to me. The house I am building is over that hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. And I would ask you, if you live in a home that's in a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark or even above like mine, whether or not you would want a home on wheels, steel frame, whether you call it mobile home or manufactured home, to be placed in that area to be considered for appraisals. And it does, contrary to what you may think, it does affect appraisals. We had to do very creative financing in order to be able to make sure that we had additional funding at the end because we know that we are not going to make the value because of the home sales in that area. So while her home may be twenty-one hundred square feet that she's bringing in, even it's used, even if it was new, let's say that had a hundred thousand dollar retail price, the dollar per square foot is forty-seven dollars. I mean, my dollar per square foot to build my house is a hundred and thirty-eight. So what does that do to property value? You know, so, so while it, it's a different area, it's agricultural, but it is very much changing. You have a beautiful lake. You have great opportunity for wonderful homes to come in there. It's really a very appealing, attractive site. It's discouraging to new homeowners if, if the city is going to allow for mobile homes or manufactured homes to come into the area. So I would ask you, as somebody who is, is putting a large financial investment into the area to make it look good, to maybe just take another look at this. I do hope that she's able to join us. But I'm not sure that a manufactured home is gonna be, it's gonna be a detriment to me, not a, not a benefit. So, thank you very much.
Any questions?
Are they, but fellas, are they listing their names on them?
I'm just gonna ask for the sign in.
Okay, I will.
If I didn't catch the lesson. Camata. It's C A M A R A T A. I really hope this address is right. It's used, I don't know it by heart. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak against?
My name is Marlene Wilson and I own some land, three-two-oh-eleven Lake Road, which is probably five tracks east of that land. And I don't like the idea that it's used and it's eleven years old. I think it should be brand-new if it's brought out there. And I think it should have a bounce stem, a footing and a foundation and permanent. You know, there are some mobile homes out there. There's two single wides next to me and a double Y on one track that I've been trying to get the two single wides removed because I own the land since two thousand and one and no, single wides, they wouldn't let me do the single wide out there. But the neighbor on the other side, lady named Angie, that just built a house about a year ago, maybe a year and a half, she said that those, those mobile homes, those manufactured homes did affect her appraise. So they will affect your appraise. But like I said, the age, it being eleven years old, there are a lot of new homes being built in. I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to put in an eleven-year-old home.
Thank you. Any questions, Marlene? Justin, would you like to respond to? Anyone else to speak against? Sorry.
What staff recommendation?
Close the public hearing.
Sure, I, I would just say one thing, and I can, I can very much appreciate whatever he said right now. The one thing I would caution is just creating exclusionary zoning based on what, what's really been said here. It's, it's a standard that, again, HUD is found to be quality. We have these at the lake. It's, um, to try and justify it by saying that, that structure being built around it are a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars. Where else are these people supposed to, to build these particular structures if, if they are regulated out of these areas on a regular basis? So I just caution that, that we have that by condition use permit at the moment. And really, we use the precedents at the lake that, that we've allowed these. We've deciphered the difference really between a mobile home is, technically, no, mobile home has been built since nineteen seventy-six. That either built to a certain quality. That'd be all I'd say there.
They, uh, just been on that, along that line because I'm familiar with that construction. What they started doing is they, before that time, they had aluminum wire in them and things like that. So since then, they've had required copper wire, nothing. Most of it's twelve gates instead of fifteen or fourteen gates or sixteen gates. So that's part of the requirement. Also, it has a different kind of framework in it than what some built before seventy-six. So I can mention one thing. The dentist office on the corner of Broadway and, and MacArthur is a modular building. And it's got a full basement and some other things and all this kind of minutes. Then the EFS was placed on it and brick and so forth. So also one other point, if, if this property sells, then with that particular provisional permit on, on there, they cannot, it has to come back before the commissioners. What's the, what's the deal on that?
So the condition use permit actually persists with the property. We can, we've done it in the past where we can place a condition upon a condition use permit to do exactly what you said right there, which is to, to say that upon the sale of the property, that the condition use permit no longer persists at that point.
I know this is rural and, and is there a, is there an association out there? That, like a homeowners association or something? That has specific rules as far as construction?
I think that's confined to a certain area on the lake. If I'm, if I know that right, I believe that would be Lake Lot Lees's perhaps over there, but.
The state lands, the school.
Dulaing Commission.
Properties are part of an official homeowners association.
There's no restrictions there?
They do have restrictions there.
On their property?
On their property. They, they do not allow manufactured homes at all. Prior to the two thousand and ten zoning change that we did, we didn't have any regulations at all. You, you could have a unit that was older than seventy-six, you could have a single wide. So the, the kind of the, the decision in two thousand and ten with, with the changes somewhat before the planning commission, the city commission at the time were to require that it be a manufactured home, which is just indicated as post nineteen seventy-six, and we required multi-sectional. With the exception that if it's a single, if there's an, if there's an old mobile home, single unit, that that could be replaced with a brand-new unit. So you, you didn't increase the quality. But so, so we kind of have a, a middle-of-the-road approach that the state is very restrictive. Of course, Potawatomi County has no restrictions and no zoning. So kind of three different, three different ways to think about it.
I, I'll add just one last piece there. When the, when the structure, if approved, when the structure goes on, everything has to be conforming to city codes. So the property will be cleaned up. Any of the other structures on there need to be removed and really just brought to today's standard.
What is the code? Does it specify on, on, on manufacturing home, manufactured home, the, what the, the foundation or, or skirting or whatever that's gonna be has to be in place and a certain look or a certain material or?
Sure. Basically, in our, our zoning out the lake, we do require that it be skirted at the very least on these particular types of structures.
Other questions?
Right, those also have concrete pads, but they're not foundations on them, but they have.
Correct.
They have pads that you set the concrete blocks on them or whatever.
A footing or something? Is it like a footing?
Yeah, but it's not tied all together or anything like that, but it's like a footing. We've done them. So that's why it'll be just pour, while we've done it, just pour footing and then set the blocks on them.
Is there a motion?
Does staff recommend approval?
Yes.
I'd move that we approve it on staff's recommendation.
Move to approve by Commissioner Harrod. Their second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit a tract of land beginning at point four hundred and sixty-six point six nine feet east of the northwest corner of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section twenty-one, township ten north, range two east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma. Thence east, one hundred and fifty-three feet. And then south, four hundred and sixty-six point six nine feet. Thence west, one hundred and fifty-three feet. Thence north, four hundred and sixty-six point six nine feet to the point of beginning to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof, rezoning said property from A one rural agricultural district to A one rural agricultural district with conditional use permit and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Call a question. Four yays, two nays, motion carries. Item eleven, consideration preliminary plat for Dockry Edition located at five thousand North Union Avenue. Case number S O one seventeen, applicant, the Land Room Group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. It suits the commission. I'm gonna actually do this report along with the next case. It's the preliminary plat and final plat for the same property. To get started, the preliminary plat really represents the entirety of the, the site, which is about a hundred and sixty acres in size, located north on Union Street, generally north of the mall. It's all under one ownership, under the Dockry Trust. And really, the request that we have, and, and I have the exhibits in your packet there, the preliminary plat is twenty-five specific commercial lots, really done over several phases. So beyond the twenty-five lots, there's the additional property that would really represent north of West Tech Road, where it would go the section line, as being done separately in the future. But as far as the portion that was previously zoned to commercial, that's the primary area of subdivision. Really, the preliminary plat shows access from Union Street, West Tech, and from the northern access point from Shawnee Mall. Really, two of those points of access would require extensive work. Really, crossing railroad track would be, would be burdensome and a deal would have to be worked out with the Shawnee Mall in order to get that to work. The main reason that we are here today is that by our subdivision regulations, any contiguous, contiguous land owned by the same property owner, when it comes to plating, they need to do it all together at one time, at least have one design on their property before they go and final plat any of these individual lots. And the reason we do that is to make sure that we have adequate circulation and the design is appropriate as the property builds out. If we do it one at a time, we really have no telling whether the quality would actually be there. So the preliminary plat may cover a hundred and sixty acres, but the final plat requested today is, is really just one lot, the first lot, located just north of FFO Furniture and represents the southernmost lot on this particular plat. Staff has really four recommendations for each of these, for the preliminary plat and the final plat, but does recommend approval for both. Staff has, uh, really four recommendations for each of these, for the preliminary plat and the final plat, but does recommend approval for both. The conditions that have been placed on both of these generally represent minor technical issues that need to be resolved on the plat, but can be done, uh, as conditioned. Staff would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
These two, these two items, eleven and twelve, are contiguous to each other, but, um, we approve them one at a time, correct?
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
Other questions, Justin? Is there any discussion among the board? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the.
Commissioner. Move to approve the preliminary plat. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bouchon. Call a question. Motion carries six oh. Item twelve, consideration of final plat for Dockery Edition located at five-thousand North Union Avenue. Case number SO two-seventeen, applicant the Landrum Group. This is the single lot that's, that's a part of the temporary plat. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Bouchon, second by Commissioner Gillum.
Difficult call a question.
You guys.
With, with conditions.
Yeah, I didn't want to.
Motion carries six oh. Thank you, gentlemen. Item thirteen, consideration of final plat for Domino Plaza Edition, section one, located at northeast corner of Forty-Fifth Street, Harrison Avenue. Case number SO three-seventeen, applicant Shawnee Harrison LLC.
Thank you. Okay, the last case we have here, finally, is the final plat for Domino Plaza Edition. And really, this represents the southern half of the fifteen acres that we preliminary platted on November seventh, twenty-sixteen. What that represents is the corner lot being the convenience store gas station, the second lot, which is a hotel pad site, the drainage detention area, along with the dog park. Not much to this one, it's roughly seven acres total in size. Staff has reviewed the final plat, uh, and really compared it with the plan due development that we've, of course, approved alongside it. And staff does recommend approval with the three conditions listed.
Does this still include a, I guess, a kind of a roadway in there from the station to the hotel and long down through there?
Yes, sir.
Other comments, questions?
I'd move with President.
I'll sit right here.
Motion by Commissioner Harrod to approve the final plat. Is there a second?
Wrong.
No, 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 no. Did you second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Oh, okay.
Second by Commissioner Gillum, I'm sorry. Call a question.
I'll have to be a little louder in the future, I guess.
You gotta not go far.
No.
Punch your button there, James. Punch your button.
Yeah, I did. Missed it again.
Motion carries six oh. Item fourteen, discussion, consideration, possible action to approve an ordinance adopting and enacting a new city code for city commission. Sounds serious.
Could we request that the city attorney explain?
Yeah, sure. This is just kind of housekeeping, guys, as you recall. We're working with Munich Code to do a recodification of, uh, just a routine recodification, the time has come. We had passed all of the updated ordinances earlier this year in March, um, and they have reviewed everything. And this is, uh, an ordinance that'll give them final authority to proceed with the final recodification, which we should expect to have shortly after passage.
Are there any questions of the city?
I don't know, but I had a particular interest in section three. And it reads something like, "The repeal provided for in section two hereof shall not be construed to revive any ordinance or part thereof that has been repealed by subsequent ordinance that is repealed by this ordinance." Does that mean, does that mean there's no zombies coming out of the other ordinance?
It's crystal clear to me, but I spent forty, I spent forty-two years reading the Internal Revenue Code.
You mean I'm gonna have to vote on that?
Is there a motion?
If that was a question, Commissioner Gillum, it's simply stating that while we're repealing certain, certain provisions that have existed subsequently, that this is not intended to repeal any of those new provisions that we have, uh, passed.
As I said, there's no, no zombies coming out of the other ordinance, right?
In furtherance of our recodification project.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Commissioner Gillum? Commissioner Bouchon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance adopting and enacting a new code for the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances, ordinances not included therein, providing a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for, for the manner of amending such code, providing for the codification, repealer, and severability in declaring an emergency.
Call a question. Motion carries six oh, if this doesn't work right, I quit. Item fifteen, acknowledged sales tax report received June twenty-seventeen. Oh, is there a motion on the emergency clause?
I saw maybe.
Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries six oh.
You, Mayor and Commissioners, I can give you a brief update now on our sales tax report for June two thousand and seventeen. Um, we finished the fiscal year very strong. June sixteen compared to June seventeen, we were up, uh, eight-point-three-one percent. So, uh, overall, we were, um, fiscal year to fiscal year, we were up point-six-six percent, which is actually slightly below budget. We, we anticipated about a two or two-and-a-half percent, uh, increase. However, I think what's more important is the, the trend line, and if you, if you look for, at the last, uh, three months or so, the trend is, is upward, and so hopefully, that will carry over into the new fiscal year. We are also presuming about a two-and-a-half percent, uh, increase in sales tax, uh, over the, over the coming fiscal year. So the trend is, is headed in the right direction. Be happy to answer any questions on that matter.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Justin. City manager report, item sixteen.
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking you all for the action you took previously, uh, on the budget, and also like to thank Cindy Arnold, who can be with us this evening, as well as all, all the department heads. The budget process, um, every year is, uh, is somewhat challenging. It was particularly challenging this year with the, um, capital budget, uh, very limited because of some debt financing, uh, for, for needed projects. And so we, we, uh, we asked, uh, more than we, than we had to, uh, last year, department heads, and, and we appreciate everyone's, um, support in this process. Specific to the city manager report, I'll, we'll just update you on a few items. Our website update process is going well, those funds are incorporated into the new budget. We, you may recall, on April third, the city commission authorized staff to solicit proposals from, from firms for, uh, a complete redo of the city's website. We received ten proposals. We have narrowed that, those proposals down to three firms that, uh, are very experienced and have done literally hundreds and thousands of municipal websites around the country. And so we'll, staff will be conducting interviews with those firms in July. We hope to narrow it down to a single firm and present a contract to you at your July seventeenth meeting. Couple other items of note. Our park master plan process, of course, we, we had a public meeting on May eighteenth, and many of you were there, I think all of you were there, actually. We, staff met with the architect last week to go over, uh, comments received. As you recall, the weather was, uh, pretty rough that evening, and, and, uh, so we, we posted those plans online and provided contact information where the public could review those and send us comments, so we've incorporated those. We, we, um, coalesced those and met with the architect last week, and, uh, we will be having a follow-up public meeting, hopefully sometime in either late, mid to late July or, um, the early part of August. And lastly, uh, update you on a sidewalk project. Uh, of course, we have the ongoing, um, city and Avidis partnership. You've seen that work on Main Street and now on, on Walla Street. But one that you may have forgotten about from about a year ago was a, um, what we call a TAP grant, which is a grant that we received from the state of Oklahoma, Department of Transportation, um, last August. And that fulfills a critical missing link between the, um, between Bryan Street and Harrison along MacArthur, where the sidewalk currently ends at the, uh, Windermere subdivision. We're gonna be able to make that connection, about three-quarters of a mile, uh, westward to connect to, to Harrison Street, where, of course, we then have the existing sidewalk on MacArthur all the way to St. Gregory's University. Um, we finally got the, uh, go-ahead from ODOT to, uh, to engineer and, and design that project in-house and, and bid that project out. So the staff is working on those plans, and, and hopefully, um, maybe come late summer or sometime this fall, we'll be able to, um, go up for bid and, and be under construction. That concludes my, the summary of my report. If you have any questions on specific items, I'd be happy to go in greater detail.
That covers a lot.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna stay up here then for number seventeen, if that's okay? Okay.
Thank you again. Number seventeen A concerns, um, our annual rehab concrete streets project. There is a memorandum from the city engineer in your packet, as well as a variety of other information. You will recall that the, uh, the low bid was received from Big Star Services in the amount of four-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. The second lowest bid was from MTZ Construction in the amount of four-hundred-and-eighty thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. After diligently reviewing, uh, references and looking at past work, staff is making the recommendation to award the contract to MTZ Construction as the lowest and best bidder, uh, in the amount of four-hundred-and-eighty thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
No, except it makes really good sense. We didn't have any severe, uh, really secure information regarding the work done on that, that type of projects from Big Star. So, uh, obviously, I think that's, surely the second bid is the best bid.
Other comments, questions? Is there a motion to, to award?
I'd move to award the contract to, uh, MTZ Construction.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries six oh, bid is awarded. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir, there is none.
Mr. Comments? None.
I could mention, uh, we're moving ahead on the, I, I was complaining about the tennis courts recently, and, uh, the, uh, little green balls that fly around in there, and the, uh, the fact that the winds in Oklahoma are pretty famous, they sometimes blow down the plains, in fact, the song says. So, uh, we're moving ahead with that, apparently. We got the, the screening actually ordered. I, I still have a few issues with the, uh, with the actual fencing there as far as support's concerned, so I'm gonna be, uh, talking to, to the, uh, school, uh, to Dr. Grace or, uh, Matt down at the, down at the high school to, uh, see what assistance they might give as far as the structures and fences themselves. But, uh, beautification, functionality, uh, these are gonna make a big, big difference for all the players. Also, for appearances of the parks and the, and the high school are all gonna be enhanced by this. So it's really a pretty big deal. I'm really happy we're moving ahead with that. Oh, and have a nice vacation whenever it starts.
All I have is, uh, gonna reiterate what Holly said about the events and Trail Day and all of that, and I had a, I didn't have to come downtown to watch the fireworks. It's pretty close. But anyhow, it seemed like a, a real nice event, and, uh, I was attended by lots of people. So I congratulate the, uh, the safe events for their, all their work and all of merchants and everybody downtown. The other thing is, I know that, uh, we mentioned this before, I know Cindy's put in a, a lot of work on our budgets and a five-year plan and things like, our five-year budget projections. So, uh, behalf of, I would just like to say, we appreciate all of her work, and, uh, they, uh, this is probably the first time we've had this, and that the, uh, different departments then can do a lot more planning and see what they've, what they've got coming up in the future. So appreciate her, our work.
Thank you. You? Just as a technical point, those winds come sweeping down. This, this meeting is recessed. And we call the, uh, what do we do? Ten here somewhere. Call the Shawnee Airport Authority meeting to order. Item one, consider approval and consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Rutherford, second by Commissioner Harrod. Is there any discussion? Call a question. Motion carries six oh. Item two, consideration of approval of Shawnee Airport Authority budget for fiscal year twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen.
Budget is in your packet. There have been no substantive changes since the workshop. Be happy to answer any questions.
You're gonna go over that in detail, are you?
No, he wants to go on vacation.
Frank the mayor might throw something at me if I.
Maybe we approve the budget for the airport authority.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod to approve. Second by Commissioner Bouchon. Call a question. Motion carries six oh. Item three, consideration of a resolution adopting the budget for the Shawnee Airport Authority for the period of July first, twenty-seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen, finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in the preparation and presentation of the budget. Been moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillum.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Oh, you gotta read the thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution approving and adopting the budget for the Shawnee Airport Authority for the period of July first, two thousand and seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of said budget.
Call a question. Motion carries six oh. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
This meeting is adjourned. Called order the Shawnee Municipal Authority would consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum. Second by Commissioner Harrod. Call a question. Motion carries six oh. Item two, consideration of approval of the Shawnee Municipal Authority budget for fiscal year twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen.
Mr. Mayor, in similar fashion, there have been no major changes since the workshop and, and, um, when we went in detail, uh, over this budget. That does recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion?
Maybe we approve.
Commissioner Harrod.
Seconded.
Second by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question.
Briefly, Mr. Mayor, resolution approving and adopting the budget for the Shawnee Municipal Authority for the period of July first, two thousand and seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of said budget.
I think that's item three. Oh, I'm sorry. I got you. I got you. Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Gillum. As I said.
You wanna get home too?
I'm trying to get. Motion carries six oh, he has a sick childhood. Item number three. Consideration of resolution adopting the budget for the Shawnee Municipal Authority for the period of July first, twenty-seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen, finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of the budget.
Maybe we approve of that.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Now you may. Call a question. Punch your button. You still didn't.
Still didn't get it.
Motion carries six oh. This is a, this is kind of a wild bunch. Is there any new business?
We're already.
This meeting is adjourned by the power of the chair, reconvene city commission meeting. Consider an executive session to discuss annual evaluation of the city manager pursuant to twenty-five OS three-oh-seven B-one discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual salary of public officer or employee. No, yeah, is there a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Gillum says, yeah. Is there a second?
Salute.
Seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Call a question. Motion carries six oh. This will be very brief, I promise.